Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Tao, Mayor Pro Tem Talamontes, Councilmember Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Maple, Councilmember Geta, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Vang, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Vice Mayor Maple, would you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Please stand if you are able. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putwan-Win Toon peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. So remain standing, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Good afternoon, colleagues, city staff, and members of the public. We actually have a relatively brief agenda this afternoon. I don't think there are any reports out of closed session, Madam City Attorney, or...
There's nothing to report out at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's begin with a special presentation. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I might have the honor to speak right now. I know I say this on behalf of all of my fellow council members and mayor, that we so appreciate our Parks and Recreation staff. And July is where we get to officially recognize our Parks and Rec staff, of which this country has done for over 40 years. And we even went further, because we like to call ours YIPSY, which is our youth parks and community enrichment, which I can't think of a better name to truly describe what embodies what the city of Sacramento does for our parks and our youth. This year's theme is Where You Belong, and it celebrates the many ways that our parks and recreational professionals foster a sense of belonging in our communities, because there really is power in our parks, power in our youths, and power with community enrichment. A little bit of facts, you guys know this well, but the public should know this. Our YIPSY team employs over 1,600 individuals, serving the mission of empowering our youth, strengthening our neighborhoods, and providing life-enriching programs for a beautiful, livable city, of which you guys really do an amazing job. Our YIPSY staff provide daily care and maintenance for over 235 developed parks, pathways, open spaces where we have in the city, which is over 4,300 acres in our city limits. In 2023 alone, they supported over 5,000 organized sporting events in our parks and permitted 475 family and community events. On a daily basis, they are managing over 14 community centers, 17 aquatics facilities citywide, so that families and children can enjoy of all ages in our city. In 2023 as well, for our aquatics team, they experienced over 100,000 drop-in visits to city pools, provided over 650 swim classes, that resulted in 4,800 registrations, employing over 225 youth, and were recognized as one of California's top training providers by the American Red Cross. Again, that cannot be understated. We are surrounded by water and riverways, and knowing that people know how to save a life is truly important. Through our programs, such as the Sacramento Youth Commission and Summer at City Hall, every year, which has been going on for over 11 years, this year there were 72 students who participated, who truly understand and embody YIPSY. It is employing our youth. It is talking about the value of what it is to work for the city, as well as community enrichment, of what it means to be in local government. So I am always appreciative as well. No offense, but we are the city of trees. We kind of are. And every year, our YIPSY staff, our brist and others, and community volunteers, truly the definition of YIPSY, we planted 248 trees last year. I know we're going to do more. I know my one youth, over three different, which I thank the city so immensely, we did 85 trees last year. We're going to try and top that and do some more. But YIPSY's partnership in all areas of running the city, with our youth, with our parks, with community enrichment for all ages, cannot be understated how important it is to the fundamental of who the city of Sacramento is. So I just want to thank you and recognize each one of you and your departments for all the hard work together as a team. You guys make it happen. I'd like to open it up for my fellow council members to say a couple of words before I call YIPSY's Director Jackie Beecham up, but Jackie, you can come up and stand up here while you hear accolades from fellow council members.
Thank you, Jackie. Oh, do you want to hear from Jackie first, or...
Hi.
Oh, let's hear from colleagues, whatever you want, Vice Mayor, of course.
I'll make my comments very brief. I wanted to say I can't say anything better than what Councilmember Kaplan said, but I did also want to additionally give a shout out to Kirk Crump, who just retired. And correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Beecham, was it 37 years?
Yes.
That is correct. 37 years on the job and working in Oak Park community, his family, a longtime family in Oak Park and the community. So just really want to give him a shout out. We're going to give him some extra love in the future as well, but congratulations to Kirk. I don't see him here.
Go ahead, Jackie. Go ahead. Who else? Councilmember Valenzuela.
Sorry. Sorry, I feel like we keep interrupting you, Jackie. I just wanted to echo my colleagues' comments and say, I mean, what a privilege it is every time I get to work with the YIPSY team, and you're amazingly... I'm looking over here, too, because Sean's hiding in the corner. But, you know, I think every time we have a problem to solve, or a project idea, or something going on, you just always go above and beyond. And so I just want to thank you, always look forward to our check-ins every month, and just, yeah, want to appreciate all the culture that's clearly in the department of really serving the community and doing everything as well as you possibly can, and it shows through. So, thank you.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Our colleague has said it all, and I appreciate her for bringing this forward. What I didn't realize in my mind was that there are 1,600 employees who do this incredible work with you, under your leadership. And so I want to acknowledge them, because without them coming to work every single day, doing the work that they do that makes a difference in our community, there would not be a Jazz in July, there would not be trucks and such, there would not be movie nights, there wouldn't be tennis courts, and/or, you know, this new game that we play now that everyone loves so much. So all the different things that they do, I just want to acknowledge them under your leadership for the great things they do to make our city one of the best cities in all of the country. So I just want to thank you, congratulate you, and acknowledge you on this month of recognition for Parks and Recs.
Thank you.
Where memories are made for so many young people, but people of all ages. And I will say that my very first job in life was as a recreation aide in the city of Milbrae. And that's what led me to become mayor, so, just kidding. But there is some connection, because you're touching lives, and the best part of life, actually. Teaching and inspiring and so many great things. Thank you so much. All right. Do we have a resolution?
I'll just share. Well, you all said all of my words, so I'll keep it brief. But my first job was a lifeguard, and I think if you were to ask most of these staff that are sitting behind me, it was probably as a recreation aide, or a lifeguard, or a scorekeeper for softball, or a youth sports coach. So definitely the path that I think we all have chosen and are here now. So you've shared a lot of the words. Thank you so much, Councilmember Kaplan, for bringing this forward. Thank you, Mayor and Council. National Recreation and Park Association recognizes July as Parks and Recreation Month, and we have not in my time here actually brought this forward to council, so thank you for doing that work for us. Tonight, there are several members of our leadership team, and as we've said, over 1,600 employees of the Youth Parks and Community enrichment department, or YIPSY. Councilmember Kaplan showed our mission is to empower our youth, strengthen our neighborhoods, and provide life-enriching programs for a beautiful, livable community. And all of that's done through our Parks and Recreation System. So through all of our parks and our parkways and trails and open spaces, our community centers, our 17 pools that we have, countless recreation programs and classes, all of the special events that happen in our parks, especially right now during the summertime, our childcare programs that are happening on school campuses and in our centers, community gardens, you name it, there's so much more. We serve hundreds and thousands of residents on a daily basis, people of all ages, all abilities, all backgrounds, all across the city, by providing them access to our safe Parks and Recreation System. So the theme is, this year is Where You Belong, and that recognizes and celebrates the importance of having access to all of these parks and recreation and youth programs and all of our trails. None of this would be possible without the hard work of our dedicated Parks and Rec team. We have our park maintenance workers, our park rangers that you all are familiar with, our planning and development team, some of whom are sitting behind me, lifeguards, we actually have some lifeguard and aquatic staff here tonight, all of our program staff that are in our community centers and our summer camps, our after-school programs, many of your children participate in those programs now, our older adult services programs and access leisure and adaptive sports programs, special events, and of course, our admin team that really makes it all happen behind the scenes. The list goes on. Over 1,600 employees every day that help to make that happen. So not just this month, but every day, we celebrate the many ways that our incredible team really fosters a sense of community and belonging here in the city. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for your continued support. It really is a joy for our team to work with you on a daily basis, to bring all of these wonderful opportunities to the community. Thank you to our community for visiting our parks and for participating in our programs, and most importantly, to our incredible YIPSY team for your service day in and day out. I have to say, we all do this work every day because we love it. We truly love the work. We choose this work. We love this profession, and we all find joy, I think, in serving our community. But this team right here is one of the biggest reasons that I show up to work every day. They're like my family, and they're the reason why I love my job so much. So I'm so grateful for this incredible team. I would not be here if it weren't for them. It's really about the team behind me and those out working in the field. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jackie, good luck, you and the team, Mayor.
Yes.
Would you like to join me?
Yes, yes, I would.
Jackie, bring your team up.
Yes. Yes, I would.
I'm going to use my last minute touch-up.
Everybody?
I'm going to take one more.
Get the kids in the front.
Do you want them in the front?
Yeah.
All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right.
I'm going to take one more.
Get the kids in the front.
Do you want them in the front?
Yeah.
All right. One, two, three. Then one more. One, two, three. Thank you. You're done.
All right, last one, I promise. One, two, three.
Hello, hello, hello. Hi. Hi.
All right. Thank you. Good start. Let's go to the consent calendar. Are there members who would like to either discuss or vote on any of the consent items separately? I see Vice Mayor Maple, Councilmember Tao.
All right. Comment on item 11, please.
11. Okay. Councilmember Tao.
Comments on item 8.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Comments on item 11.
Okay, we have, I'm sorry, Councilmember Geta.
Item number 11.
Item number 11. Okay. Very good. Anybody else? All right, let's hear from the public before we hear from the members of the council.
I have one speaker on the consent calendar, Marbella Sala on item 8.
Thank you. Welcome back. It's good to see all of you. So I'm just here to, in support of item 8. It is a joint grant proposal that, and thanks to Jennifer and Mikel, have put together a proposal that includes Gardenland Northgate, but also North Sacramento, and I think it will be the first that we're coming together to address issues of transportation. This is a SACOG EEI grant, and the focus of that grant is to build infrastructure under resource communities and provide information and outreach, and really address the transportation needs. For Gardenland, we really want to do an in-depth issue in our community to figure out and understand what they would, what it would take for them to use bikes and to walk and to ride public transportation. And we know that the Northgate Mobility Plan exists, and they've done a wonderful job, but this is really to document first SACOG, what our community's saying, and in hopes that with that information, when they come to funding the needs of North Sacramento, they're going to give us the necessary resources to begin the implementation of our Northgate Mobility Plan, and then the other programs in North Sacramento that I know they're trying to address. So I'm very pleased that the city is supporting us, and we're doing a joint proposal that includes North Sacramento. And in addition to that, Congressman Bera has said that we need to start looking at doing joint projects in North Sacramento, and I'm hoping that this will lead to getting a block grant from him. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you very much. It's here from the members now. I've got Councilmember Tao on item 8.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First off, I would like to commend Mikel and Jennifer on working with community groups for, you know, District 3 and 2 to apply for this grant. My neighborhood is under-invested, and, you know, I, this is a small grant, but it helps with capacity building, with trusted messengers in my community, you know, CBOs that spend there for 15, 20 years, that can really do the work with our, bringing up this discussion on mobility, transportation, and it complements the city's work. You know, I know Jennifer's doing a lot of work on the study of Norwood Avenue, as well as the Apostle Boulevard and Marazelle Road. And so this is a holistic combination of all that work together with the CBOs, Culture Mutual Assistance, and the Urban League, to really reach out to the community and get their participation, get their inputs, so that the city can really look at how we will redesign or rethink North Sacramento moving forward. And so, yeah, excited for this grant, and want to thank Jennifer and Mikel for taking the lead on this.
Okay, thank you. Let's now hear, let's now hear from Vice Mayor Maple on item 11, followed by Councilmember Kaplan, and then Councilmember Geta.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I really just want to give a shout out to the city manager's team, and in particular, Yaian, for her incredible work and the team's work on this. This is an additional $500,000. It's going towards a great program. So last year, as you all remember, we approved of four pilot programs that, to reduce the likelihood of displacement in Oak Park neighborhood and some of the surrounding neighborhoods, and address a variety of needs, everything from home repair to homelessness prevention and first-time home buyer support. And so we're seeing the outcomes of some of these programs now. To date, these programs have served 430 community members and expended $1 million in funding. So this is going directly to the community, to some of the areas that are most in need. So this anti-displacement program, it provides one-time assistance to folks in financial crisis due to an unexpected life event. So we all know what that feels like. We have been there. Everything from medical expenses to car repairs, something happens. Things happen in life, and sometimes we just don't have what it takes to make ends meet. And so this can go to rent and utility assistance and other programs, and so it's really, it's made a difference in people's lives, truly. And we've heard directly from some of those people in my office. I know some of them have at times come to council. So just really grateful for the program. It's so effective that we see the need to allocate additional funds, because we really want to make sure that we're keeping people in their homes. It's one of the key issues that I heard, you know, on the campaign trail a couple of years ago. People were very concerned, especially in the Oak Park neighborhood, about being displaced out of their homes, not being able to keep up with the rising costs of rent and so on. And we want to make sure that we can keep people in their neighborhood that they love and they cherish, with their neighbors, their family, their friends. So just really grateful. I'll be supporting this today, and thanks to the team.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to piggyback on what the Vice Mayor said. I think this is just a, a small microcosm of what a successful program can do that our community members need. It's the, when we talk about how we handle our unhoused and homelessness, it first and foremost starts with how do we keep people in their house? Because once they lose it, it's so much harder. And so this is just a small example of where we know in 18 months, at least 85 families have received that assistance, because the Salvation Army, we've given them that flexibility. What does that family need right then and there for them to stay? And an extension of this means a potential, other 50 to 90 families may be able to stay in their house and not end up on the streets. And so I think what's important as we do this, that we're also gathering the data so that we can look at, is this the type of program that, while I get where we have budget cuts, but where we're looking at how we're spending our money, where are the successful programs? Because I think something like this, with this flexibility, we know has a greater impact than maybe other areas. And using and having that data, where to invest and what programs are successful. But I just want to say, say kudos and thank you, and please keep, keep the data, because I think this is something that we can build on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is an exciting opportunity here to talk about how the real delivery of the active work that's happened. I want to thank my colleagues for voting in this past allocation for the four programs who are here. And, but I also want to give a lot of recognition to both the community partners and both Councilmember Shanir and Mayor Steinberg at the time, and I, who were working to, to get some outcomes here. And here's a clear example of how we are putting money directly into anti-displacement, to homeless prevention, through that conversation and negotiation. And even outside of the Community Benefits Agreement, this amount of money was resolved. And so it goes to show that, you know, that the act of participation of our council members with the community is how a lot of this, this direct dollars goes out to make sure that we're doing something more that's, more than something that's pro forma, more than just a document. It's the actual work of saying, hey, how can we, how can we get money to the communities that need it? And not only have we seen this month the opening of, and starting to fill, one of the housing projects on Stockton Boulevard, Mercy Housing, that's a product of that commitment, and that is on permanent housing. This is on the, the prevention of housing displacement. And what was important about recognizing, and we can just say, hey, this is great, we're getting, you know, half a million dollars out to prevent folks from falling into homelessness. But what's important about the action today is that continued work on every aspect of making sure that we're securing an opportunity for folks. Because it's, it's not just about the housing piece, but on Thursday and the next following weeks to come, through the Sacramento Employment Training Agency, we're going to continue the work on the employment side, and we, as we have been with all the hiring fairs that have happened. So not only on making sure that folks have a safety net, but then how do we make sure we increase their wages, and making sure that we address the overall impact that happens with the changing needs. Now, housing costs were increasing already before Aggie Square came in. And what, what's important to recognize here as well is that this was a recognition that even with Aggie Square coming in, we needed to take a step forward and address that issue. So I'm excited about voting for this and getting it out the door, but more importantly, it's been now, I think, I would say, three councils that have taken an active step in making sure that we make this a reality for people in the community, both in District 6 and in District 5.
I guess I just want to add, I'm really glad you called out this item. Maybe it's an appropriate time for me to announce, I'm going to do my last State of the City address in September at Aggie Square.
I thought you were going to say right now.
No, not right now, right now. Ladies and gentlemen, all of you watching, no, it'll be short, but it'll be at Aggie Square, because I do think that this, this investment is part of a larger model for how to achieve inclusive economic development in all parts of our city. And it's a story that needs to not just be told for the sake of being told, but to really think and strategize about how we replicate this in North Sacramento. Councilmember Tao, in other parts of the city, on Northgate Boulevard, all over the city. Because, and yes, it's true, have the anchor of UC Davis and the UC Davis Medical Center, but this was not just UC Davis, it was the community. And, you know, sometimes people and stakeholders are at odds about, about common objectives, but different ways to get there. Well, this was creative tension at its best, and an agreement that led to a $50 million trust fund for affordable housing, of which 10 million is for direct anti-displacement efforts, of which this project is now being funded. So thank you to the council members and predecessors and, and all who helped make this happen. And this is just the beginning, not just at Aggie Square, but if we do it right, in other parts of the city as well. Thank you. Let's hear, we did hear from the public. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hearing no further comment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. All right, well, I guess I said, this was a relatively brief agenda. Are there council ideas and questions? Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes, thank you. I need to make my AB 1234 report, that I attended the Local Progress Conference in Oakland last Thursday through Saturday, connected with local elected officials from around the country on topics like immigrant resettlement strategies, best practices for housing, and other great ideas, really from peer communities across the United States. So it was a really cool event, and I hope my colleagues will consider going next year, and I will make sure to send you the information so you can join. I was going to make a comment about Rio City Cafe, but I do want to just publicly acknowledge that the mayor's statement really covered it, and I really want to thank him for his work on that over the last few days and couple of weeks, really. And then finally, I guess I just want to ask that after the grant's pass decision, I know there's going to be some pretty big changes to the enforcement protocol that we considered and adopted last July, and so I think it would be prudent to bring forward an update item to the council in the near future about the enforcement protocol as it stands, so we can discuss and deliberate that as a body.
I agree with that. I think we want to report back to discuss that and understand where this is going. Okay. Where the, where the city team intends it to go. Thank you. Vice Mayor Maple.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So two, two events and one really exciting announcement. So this Thursday at 9:00 AM, Thursday the first, at 9:00 AM, I'll be at the Oak Park Community Center doing our, our Walk with Katie, or with our seniors and our wonderful YIPSY staff at the Oak Park Community Center. So please come and join us Thursday at 9:00 AM. And then this is not until the next week, but I did want to announce here, so folks can put it on their calendar, that the mayor and I will be hosting a District 5 Town Hall on Saturday, August 10th, at 10:00 AM. That's going to be at Sacramento High School, so please put that on the calendar and come join us for that wonderful event. And the really exciting news that is not my news, but news of a wonderful organization in District 5, La Familia. the UC Davis Medical Center, but this was not just UC Davis, it was the community. And, you know, sometimes people and stakeholders are at odds about, about common objectives, but different ways to get there. Well, this was creative tension at its best, and an agreement that led to a $50 million trust fund for affordable housing, which 10 million is for direct anti-displacement efforts, of which this project is now being funded. So thank you to the council members and predecessors and, and all who helped make this happen. And this is just the beginning, not just at Aggie Square, but if we do it right, in other parts of the city as well. Thank you. Let's hear, we did hear from the public. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hearing no further comment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. All right. Well, I guess I said, this was a relatively brief agenda. Are there council ideas and questions? Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, thank you. I need to make my AB 1234 report that I attended the Local Progress Conference in Oakland last Thursday through Saturday. I connected with local elected officials from around the country on topics like immigrant resettlement strategies, best practices for housing, and other great ideas, really from peer communities across the United States. So it was a really cool event. I hope my colleagues will consider going next year. And I will make sure to send you the information so you can join. I was going to make a comment about Rio City Cafe, but I do want to just publicly acknowledge that the mayor's statement really covered it. And I really want to thank him for his work on, on that over the last few days and couple of weeks, really. And then finally, I guess I just want to ask that after the grant's pass decision, I know there's going to be some pretty big changes to the enforcement protocol that we considered and adopted last July. And so I think it would be prudent to bring forward an update item to the council in the near future about the enforcement protocol as it stands, so we can discuss and deliberate that as, as a body.
I agree with that. I think we want to report back to, to discuss that and understand where this is going. Okay. Where the, where the city team intends it to go. Thank you. Vice Mayor Maple?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So two, two events and one really exciting announcement. So this Thursday at 9:00 AM, Thursday, the, the first at 9:00 AM, I'll be at the Oak Park Community Center doing our, our Walk With Katie or with our seniors and our wonderful YPC staff at Oak Park Community Center. So please come and join us Thursday at 9:00 AM. And then this is not until the next week, but I did want to announce here, so folks can put it on their calendar, that the mayor and I will be hosting a District Five Town Hall on Saturday, the August 10th at 10:00 AM. That's going to be at Sacramento High School. So please put that on the calendar and come join us for that wonderful event. And the really exciting news that is not my news, but news of a wonderful organization in District Five, La Familia, they announced this week that they incredibly received $17.8 million from an EPA grant for the Greening North Franklin Project. It's really, really exciting. Yeah. If you're listening out there, Rachel Rios, Rachel Rios and La Familia, thank you so much for your hard work on this. Especially also want to thank Congresswoman Matsui for helping making this happen. This is a huge deal for District Five and a huge deal for Franklin Boulevard. So this will go towards things like supporting our local residents and businesses, energy efficiency, and especially urban green spaces. So for those of you who haven't been down Franklin, in the, the South City Farms area where the Maple Neighborhood Center is and La Familia is located, you know that this is a neighborhood that needs a lot of love. It's an area that needs a lot more tree canopy. It needs a lot more of everything. And so they have been steadfastly working on this for many, 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 many years in partnership with many of you up here and my predecessor. And so this is going to be a partnership with them, Community Resource Project, the Franklin Boulevard Business Association, JCH Research, and United Latinas. So we'll keep you all posted as everything moves on, but just wanted to send them a special congratulations. Thank you.
That's great. And I think do credit to our city, too, because we made the initial grant to La Familia, which helped get this started. So thank you, everybody. All right. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. This Friday is our District One AAPI Second Annual Celebration. We're going to have live music from the East Wind Band, which is pretty amazing, performers and others, hula dancers. So coming out, there's going to be food trucks at the North Natomas Regional Park, as well as bounce houses and more. So a fun family event. And then if you don't like the night events, but you like morning events, wake up Saturday morning and come to our farmer's market. 9:00 AM starts yoga. It's going to actually be a beautiful Saturday morning and come and join our vendors. And then for those who are residents in Robla, the Sacramento Police Department is partnering with the Robla School District. And I know, I think we, Councilmember Tao and I donated free kids' bikes to be raffled off to those who attend the event from, from Robla Schools. And then Tuesday, August 6th, we will not be in these chambers, but each one of us will be running around our neighborhoods. It is National Night Out. So everyone enjoy your community and all the block parties that are going on.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Rick Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, we had Jazz in July in, in July, in the month of July. But unfortunately, because of the heat in July, many of our concerts got canceled. So we are now moving Jazz in July to Jazz in August. And it's going to take place on the 16th at Goshabin Park. We're going to have Joe Mazafaro Band, and he's going to take place on 16th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We encourage you to bring your chairs, blankets, family and friends, and join us for the delicious food trucks that will be out there and the smooth sounds of Joe Mazafaro, Under the Stars, Under the Cooler Weather. So come on out and have a good time and Jazz in August.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. Just have two announcements. One, wanted to announce that this Friday, we have an event, the first E Entertainment Festival taking place at Shasta Community Park. This is one of our recipient from the City of Festival Grant, and that is happening at Shasta Park from 3:00 to 6:00, encouraging the community to come out and join us. And then also just wanted to announce that we're having our annual South Sac Festival that's taking place August 24th from 11:00 to 3:00 at Valley High Park. There will be free activities, performances, lots of resources. So we hope to see you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagueta?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to make a couple of announcements. This Saturday at 10:00 AM, we're going to do our SAC Fire Open House with our fire department and our fire, at Fire Station 10, over off of Fruit Ridge and 66th Street at the Fire Station 10, that's 5642 66th Street. And then I hope you'll join us for the opening of the new Bike Dog Brewing and over in their new location in East Sacramento, on the corner of 66th and Folsom Boulevard. And that'll be at 12:30 to 1:30 this, this Sunday, August 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tao?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of announcements of events happening in this weekend in my district. Next Level Anime Group will be hosting their fifth basketball and volleyball tournament at North Sacramento at Grant High School. I'm told they're, they have about 20 basketball teams and 40 volleyball teams, youth recreational teams. We will also be collaborative with them to do a back-to-school supply for the community with backpacks, scooters, and household items. This event will start from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM at Grant High School, 1400 Grand Avenue. Another event happening in our district same day is a talent show hosted by the Strawberry Manor Neighbor Association at 1505 Grand Avenue. Local talents will celebrate music, dance, and community, August 3rd at 12:00 noon, 1505 Grand Avenue. And then on Sunday, my office is also sponsoring the Afrios and their 22nd Annual Unity in the Community, Community Event to promote Stop the Violence, featuring live music, Soul Food Cookout entertainers, AAU, AAU Youth Basketball Signups. August 4th, this will be at Hagewood Park, 3271 Maritzell Boulevard, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Last one. I have Walk With a Councilmember on Thursday at the South Natomas Community Center. So if you want to get your exercise in and discuss City Hall, please join us. And I'm also doing a backpack drive with the Southern Member Kevin McCarty at North Gate Park on the 5th. And we have a little over 400 backpacks, give away school supplies, hot dogs, being grilled by the firefighter, donated by the Garland-North Gate Community Association, and much more. So invite families to come join us.
The park is at?
The North Gate Park.
Looky, I need to get that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Thank you all, colleagues. Let's now end the meeting with a public testimony on items not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nine speakers. Guy?
Got this gentleman. Is he signed up here?
He is. I'll call your name if you-
We'll call your name. Just a moment, please. Thank you.
Guy Stevenson, Lynette Hall, Rebecca Sandoval, I think Gabrielle Knox.
City council members and Mayor. I'm here, but not to complain. I'm here to more address something. Last week, I was here and I was having lunch with a couple of my deputy sheriff friends over at the courthouse. And this end of the building was closed, so I decided to walk around. That was a mistake because there's two things that I cannot stand because we don't live in that type of country and you guys get PBIT money. And that is, when you walk around that courthouse, it is so polluted with urine and feces that it smells. And when it's hot, it intensifies. So the only thing I'm going to say is that I would appreciate, and I'm requesting and asking if you guys can address this issue because the people that work in the courthouse, all the people and these attorneys around here, they should not have to smell that. And I understand that there's a homeless problem. I get that. I do get that. But, you know, the feces and the urine, they have to stay on top of it because it's really, I don't want to breathe it. And I'm sure other people don't want to breathe it. So I'm asking you, Daryl Steinberg, Mayor, if you can address this to your public works and ask them to at least spray it down, because it is foul. It is very, very foul. And when it's hot, oh my God, you don't even believe how bad it is. But thank you and have a great night.
Thank you for, and I will.
Lynette Hall?
Can Gabrielle Knox go first?
Pardon me?
Can Gabrielle Knox go first?
Sure. So Gabrielle, then Lynette, then Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Gabrielle Knox. You guys probably, you guys probably see me as much as you see my mom, Lynette Hall. I'm here pleading for help. On July 28th, 2024, my friend was assaulted by a girl in the neighborhood. She has been a problem in my community, but also a community my mom fights so hard for. This girl has tried to assault me multiple times, some which has been caught on camera at the Oak Park Community Center, and attacked my friend for no reason. This girl has also been caught beating up an elderly woman when she was just trying to protect another girl from getting assaulted. This girl has, this girl has also came up to my school trying to fight me and has jumped on me at the Oak Park Community Center, which is the reason why I no longer attended. And when she was asked why she wanted to fight me, she said it was because I said something about her dead grandma, which I did not. She has also assaulted the principal and vice principal at Father Keith B. Kenny. And last but not least, last year while my mom was hosting the City Management Academy, where the mayor was speaking, she threatened to shoot up the community center. In conclusion, I ask for something to be done. I shouldn't be scared to walk to the park or even walk outside.
I'm so sorry. This isn't right. And I thank you for coming forward and talking to us. We know your family and appreciate your family and you so much. What have you, has this been reported to the police? And are they, are they investigating this?
It's all, they said it's a misdemeanor assault. She's been arrested eight times. Nothing has been done.
So let us follow up with the police chief. We will. And, and ask for a report and, and see what we can do. Right? That's what, we will follow up. Okay?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am here today as a resident of District Five, but more importantly, as a concerned mother. I'm usually the one people come to when they need help, but now I'm coming today because I need help. Over the past two years, my daughter has been terrified to be in Oak Park where we live, where my family has been since 1940. This child has been terrorizing not only other kids, but even the elders in the neighborhood. I have removed my child for attending the after-school program and have been able to protect her. However, on Saturday, I attended an event at McClatchy Park, which was supposed to be secure and gated. But unfortunately, we have janky promoters that we continue giving permits to when we know that they are not doing what they're supposed to. They left half of the park open where people could come and go, even though this was a paid event. Security sat idly by while myself and other people tried to break these kids up. This kid was just beating and beating on my daughter's friend. She's never seen my daughter's friend before, but because my daughter was standing next to her, and I was standing next to her, and I couldn't protect my daughter or this child. The child was also the child of a vendor who had been paying to be a vendor at the park. I do want to shout out Mike Benjamin from Katie Maple's office, who intervened and was also assaulted in the process. This child also attacked him and threw bark and rocks in his face. Again, security was a part of the problem. It escalated to adults and grown men from Oak Park getting involved, all because of this kid's fight. And I'm just at my wit's end. My daughter doesn't feel comfortable walking to the store. And until something is done, I will not only not attend any events in Oak Park, I will not sponsor or have my staff at any events in Oak Park because I cannot protect them. So again, I'm here asking for help.
Lynette, I just want to say thank you for, for coming here. I did, I saw your Facebook post and talked with Michael Benjamin on Sunday and on Monday. And we're in communication with the police department to get behind this. So you'll expect a response from us. And I'm just really sorry. Our next speaker is Rebecca Sandoval, then William Hunt, then Michael Horn.
Good evening. When council district boundaries changed and North Gate and Gardenland were no longer with East Sacramento, I had great hopes for better representation. One, our councilperson has been referring to North Gate Boulevard as La North Gate. This is not sounding well with the North Gate community and creates a cultural division. The Hispanic Chamber of Commerce has input, had the input into decision to give $450,500 of our PBIT funds to Joshua House. These funds were to be used for economic recovery of North Gate Boulevard. It is concerning that a hospice facility for the homeless will not help with our economic recovery. Councilmember Talamontes scheduled a town hall meeting and people attended, expecting an exchange with Ms. Talamontes. Instead, the meeting was run by the executive director of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who spoke about a PBIT, Pudding Business Investment District. And lastly, Gardenland-North Gate Neighborhood Association has reported Joshua House will be open in September. Our children return to school August 20th. So please, give us an answer to a very pressing question. How and when will deceased bodies be transported three yards from Garden Valley Elementary School to North Gate Boulevard so that our children's emotional well-being will not be affected? And I've got a little bit more time here. Just want to say that the community, and you all know, I've been here a lot, and the school district has sent asking for mitigation measures to ensure the safety of our children, still no answers to date. And with it scheduling to be open, and we don't know what to expect, you leased that property.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is William Hunt, then Michael Horn.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Hunt. I pastor a small church at 6380 63rd Street. And we have, we moved from 3730 Broadway of two years back. We sold our property and invested all our monies in this new building at 6380 63rd Street, where the homeless situation was not bad at all, one or two people. And now we go there, there's at least a half a dozen people that have moved in there. We went there today, and there are tents everywhere. They got tents for their cars. They got tents for their dogs. They have dogs roaming up and down the street. We have invested in that building more than $1 million. And I am not happy. I've called our chairman from District Six, and he spoke to me a while, but we can't seem to get anything done. When you go in there and move them out, soon as the last truck turns the corner, they come right back in. It's just like wagon train. They just have their stuff all lined up and they just coming in there. This is the end of the street. This is a street that was made that way for the students that goes to Willsey Woods Junior High School. They cannot use that. Adults don't even drive down there, walk down there, or anything. And I want to know, who can I talk to in the city of Sacramento that will give me some kind of reasoning or when they will move and clean up that street? Right now, everybody's blaming everybody. If I call the city, the police says, well, that's the, the special community council people. If I call, they say, well, we'll put you on the dock.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Have you called 311?
Call them. I got about 900 phone calls with 311. Every day, we call them twice today. We call at least four to five times a week, 311. We get the same answer. Back in June the 27th, they're supposed to come back up. Morrison Creek is there. They cut holes all through the fence. The county comes out there to repair it. They're supposed to get everybody out. Nobody did anything and nobody calls us.
Assistant City Manager Mario Lara, I believe, is here. Is he here?
He's going to be right behind that door.
He's going to be right behind the door. He oversees the whole homeless service operation in the city. So why don't we have Mr. Lara meet with you right now? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Horn, then Michael Coleman, then Julia Skiles.
Hello. As a, someone who lives on SSI Social Security, learning this way, a former foster youth, and also a victim of childhood abuse and abuse, who never turned to drugs, gangs, and crime, or never, never became the abuser. In fact, I became a preschool teacher through the state of California. And I'm also studying to be a lawyer so I could actually prosecute abusers instead of becoming the abuser. I have a homeless proposition for low-income housing for people who, who are homeless. Bakerfield has a home, a union motel. They, the people on SSI Social Security pay $700 a month. And they have the refrigerator, they have the bed, they have the shower, they have the stove and, and everything you need just to live throughout the month. They don't have nothing like that in, in Sacramento. They don't have nothing like that in Sacramento. So, my proposal is create a, bring a homeless, have the city pay for a homeless motel, so people on SSI and Social Security could pay $300 a week, so they could make that 300, that three times a week. Because the only reason why they're on the streets is because they're SSI, Social Security, who don't make the three times a week, which is not all fault, it's the government's fault, because we don't give us the SSI, we don't give us the Social Security, the federal government does. So, it's a government responsibility to make sure this homeless motel for homeless are actually be put onto place, so we could solve that, the real problem, the root of the problem. Because we weren't asked to be disabled, but yet we are. We weren't asked to be on SSI, but yet we are. And so, by saying it's our problem, and it's our fault that we're homeless, that's blaming us with something we have no control over, which is not just unfair, it's unjust and unethical. So, I was hoping we could put this on the ballot in the future, so we could actually really, so we could actually literally vote on a bill, so we could get that funding for my organization, because my.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Michael Coleman, Julius Giles, and then Ryan Misano would be our final speaker.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for hearing me. I befriended the homeless. I went to them, and I talked to them. They look after each other, they share, some have been on the street and known each other for years. When they're forced to move, many of them move together. They stay up all night to defend themselves. They've had garbage dumped on them, attacked, stolen from, lied to, and treated like garbage. Objects thrown, frozen water balloon, for example, shot at with paintballs, including a pellet gun. They stay, they have to, they take drugs to stay up all night and to ease their hunger pains, and I know, because they told me these things, they've, one person went without food for days. But not all of them are drug addicts, and they're not all troublemakers. Governor Newsom's suggestion to solve the problem, the $1 billion, that does nothing, does nothing to solve the problem. Many want help and would accept it if provided, if provided they were not required to give up their pets, which they currently are, or go cold turkey, but we can help, I believe we can help them where they are. All they want is a place to live that's safe, sanitary, where their basic needs are met, food, water, lighting, showers, and yes, even needle exchange. Some will undoubtedly continue to use as they work to get clean, which, for anyone who has been addicted, including myself, takes time along with counseling and education, and we need to give these people the grace to do that. So, I have a solution. Give them a place they could call their own and help govern with the provision that there be no violence, keep it clean, and dispose of trash properly. It won't work for everyone, but for those who are ready, it's the first step in attaining self-sufficiency and restoration of self-respect, and would relieve a great burden, not only on this city, but every city in the state. It would be far cheaper, and if successful, provide a viable path to recovery, taking inspiration and ideas from the homeless themselves who support and hold each other accountable, enabling them to govern and get back to where they were before.
Your comments, your time is complete. I have two more speakers, Julius Giles, then Ryan Misano.
I believe that Sacramento is in shambles, because our so-called leaders, leaders care more about what goes into their pockets and not what's best for Sacramento. You may be asking yourself, Julius, what have you done for Sacramento? I am here, and I've been here, standing for free speech. Ever since the implementation of feminism and minority victimhood, if you dare speak out, you would be labeled a misogynist, racist, Nazi, homophobe, anti-Semitic, white supremacist, et cetera. If I have concerns about my city and I address a specific city council member, I am told I'm not allowed to do that. You want to know why? I believe it's to absolve accountability from individual members, thus compelling the people, compelling the people to address them as a whole, rather than one by one, to prevent changing the minds of people who voted for them. The media would never report this to you, because they're controlled by a group of people that cannot be named, otherwise you'd be labeled an anti-Semite. This is not a conspiracy, this is the truth. And if we don't tell the truth, politicians will continue to lie. The media will continue to lie. Lying lips are an abomination to the Lord, but those who act faithfully are his delight. Proverbs 1222. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ryan Misano.
I don't think anyone should have a television, as it's completely controlled, or be watching movies. Though there are two movies, I'd highly recommend, the 1988 movie, They Live, by John Carpenter. Also shows how hard it is to expose dangerous elements that are hidden in society. In 1970, a very good movie was released, Brotherhood of the Bell. It details how secret societies are very powerful and rule from the shadows. Let's talk about these secret societies. When I end, I'll discuss two books that lay out irrefutable facts proving what I'm briefly touching on. In 2021, I lived in Kildare, North Dakota, for nine months. North Dakota is a beautiful state, and visiting the Badlands was an amazing experience, though being surrounded by buffalo for 14 hours overnight with the temperature at around 10 degrees was quite the adventure. I noticed in the city of Kildare, population 1,000, they had a Masonic Lodge. And having visited at least 45 of the lower 48 states in the last four years, I noticed that nearly every single city, no matter how small, had a Masonic Lodge. Now, who are the Masons? Who are all these international organizations? There are many other international organizations with secret agendas, secret rituals, and secret memberships. My experience in life is, when you are telling the truth and you stand for good agendas, you don't need to hide. But in addition to the secretive Masons, we have the Elks Lodge, Moose Lodge, Lions International, and our Greek Alphabet College Fraternities. None of these should exist and none have good agendas. Also, Mormon founder Joseph Smith was a Freemason, and Jehovah's Witness founder, Charles Taze Russell, was another one. 90% of Mormons and Jehovah Witnesses don't know this. This is why these organizations have secretive rituals and secretive leadership. The books I recommend every American read are Leon de Poncini's Freemasonry and Judaism, and Henry Ford's The International Jew. Behind all of these organizations are Talmudic Jews. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the Sacramento City Council, we are adjourned.